Okay, well, welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting. You probably noticed the room has a little blue glow because that's because we're celebrating the world champion Los Angeles Dodgers. Any Dodger fans in the audience? Got Dodger fans? All right. Very good. And obviously, this is the eve of another important event that will be taking place. That's tomorrow. Anybody know what's tomorrow?
Election day.
All right, election day. Good. Everybody's aware of that. So, we'll begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll have the city clerk introduce those individuals.
Okay, tonight's invocation will be given by Montclair Fire Chaplain Jimmy Crowell, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Councilmember Ru.
Perfect.
Let's pray. Father God, we just come before you tonight. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to come before you. I just ask, Lord, that you just fill your spirit in these chambers tonight, Lord, that you make, help these chamber council people make great decisions for this city, Father God, as you always have, Lord. We just ask that you continue to be with them, Lord. Give them wisdom on all issues tonight, Lord. Be with the people of Montclair, Father God. Help them to present their needs in an orderly manner in front of God, and that everything just go well for the city, Father God. We just ask that your protection over the, all the first responders of this city, Lord, and we just ask that you just continue to be with us, Lord. So, fill this spirit, Lord. Fill us with your spirit, Lord, in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, can we have roll call?
Lopez?
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Ru?
Present.
Protem Johnson? And Mayor Dutreg?
Present. So, at this time, we have one presentation item. This is the update on the tentative national pollution discharge elimination system. And I'm going to ask city clerk or city manager who's doing the presentation on this.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into this, I am a member of the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board. As such, I've talked to our legal counsel for the board, and they did suggest, I recuse myself tonight, that opinion was also affirmed by our city attorney. So, I will leave the chambers, and when you're done, just retrieve me from the boardroom. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, staff, residents. Before you tonight is an agenda item relating to tonight's presentation, and it is my pleasure to introduce Arlene Chu. She's engineering manager in the Environmental Management Division of the San Bernardino County Department of Public Works, who will provide an update on the MS4, or municipal separate storm sewer system permit renewal. And along with her is Christopher Bland as well. He's, who's the storm water program manager. So, they're both here to present this item and to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members and city management. Thank you for having us here tonight to update you on this tentative NPDS permit for the counties of Orange Riverside and San Bernardino County. There's a lot of acronyms. I'll go over the main ones for you. NPDS is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. You'll see it spelled out on the top right-hand corner of your slide here. It is codified with the Clean Water Act way back in 1972, and subsequently amended. It attempts to regulate and control pollutant discharge. It started out as point sources, so we're talking about industrial processes from, say, a factory or our sanitary sewer, sewer treatment plant, point sources coming out of a pipe. The MS4 is essentially our storm drain system, so it drains our watersheds. So, that is a non-point source. This MS4 municipal separate storm sewer system, mouthful here, can carry pollutants coming off of our streets and everything else. So, we need a permit in order to properly manage and operate our MS4. This next slide will help explain the MS4 in our urban areas. So, rainfalls, if it falls on our roofs, off our driveways, off of our yard, into the street, and it's collected by our storm drain system. Our storm drain system is there to safely take storm flows away from life and property, prevent flooding. But in the process of doing that, it can carry pollutants that land, land coming from our yard, coming from the cars on our streets. So, in order to properly maintain it, we need, the municipalities need a permit from the state in order to try and reduce or eliminate these pollutants coming off of this run, the runoff. And in turn, it protects water quality. So, we try to clean, oh, air quote it, clean this water before it gets to channels, our streams and rivers, lakes, and eventually the ocean. So, this new one, next. Picture's nice. It wants to stay. There, oh. It was right. So, the current permit will be our fifth term. We are currently on our fourth term. It is specific to San Bernardino County and cities here in the valley area, 18 permities total. With the tentative order that is out for review right now, it'll be fifth term. The regional board has made it a regional permit, and that'll cover our valley area here in San Bernardino County, northwestern Riverside County, and north Orange County. So, the Santa Ana River watershed. So, three counties, total of 60 permities. So, we're going from our tight group of 18 to 60. We formed a tri-county group to review this tentative order released in March. We requested with the regional board, they extended it to a 120-day comment period that ended in July. Our tri-county group of 60 permities submitted, coordinated, and submitted an extensive comment letter package. And we are in the process of setting up meetings to continue discussion on that. Because of the potential cost of compliance that this tentative order poses, San Bernardino County contracted with Beacon Economics. It is one of the most well-respected economic and research consulting firms to conduct an independent data-based analysis of the tentative order's impacts as currently written. The majority of costs based on these requirements are due to compliance with numeric limits or WMP's watershed management plans. Watershed management plans are currently in effect in LA County. So, this analysis by Beacon was use the LA County model to project these costs. And just compliance alone for our 18-permitty cities, if the tentative order were to be adopted today, would be $10.2 billion over the next 20 years. So, this is the top five costs for $10.8 billion in compliance if adopted today. Oh. I didn't press the button, but perfect timing because this is a little busy slide, but I highlighted Montclair here. This is the cost share breakdown as we currently have established in our current implementation plan. The cost on the far-right column is our total 20-year costs. It's numbered from the least at the very top with Big Bear Lake all the way down to San Bernardino County, who has the largest share based on population and land area. For Montclair, the projected 20-year cost in millions is $250 million over 20 years if the tentative order is adopted today. But do not fear. Do not fear. What we are doing right now is meeting with the regional board, setting up meetings with the regional board. Board staff have arranged for three meetings so far individually with the counties. Riverside County met earlier today, and we are debriefing with our Riverside counterparts to see how that meeting went, and trying to frame how the future meetings will go. So, we are hoping with these future meetings to say, bring forward to the regional board, this is real costs. This is what our, we are concerned about, and hopefully we can, I'll say tweak, tweak the language in the draft permit in order to make things much more workable for us and not have to realize billions of dollars of compliance. So, there is a little bit of hope. Next steps. We will continue to coordinate amongst our 18 cities. We do meet monthly as a permitty group here in San Bernardino County. We also have our technical subcommittee meetings where little small groups get together and strategize on different topics of the permit. What you are seeing in your agenda items today, I believe it was, it's one of the agreements, is the approval of the Joint Defense Common Interest and Confidentiality Agreement. With your approval tonight, we will have 15 participating permities with, under the confidentiality agreement, and we've already started preparing for our December 4th meeting. So, if you or your, oh, someone's, thank you. This is our contact information. Chris is our storm water program manager, works very closely with your staff. And Jonathan Dillon is his county counterpart, who manages the unincorporated areas. And then you're, feel free to contact me, both Jonathan and Christopher work under my division. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Chris is here if you have technical questions.
Oh, thank you very much. So, for Montclair, I believe I read the number, it's 250 million? Am I correct?
Yes.
The way I read that number. And this regulatory, is it a state regulatory or is it federal regulatory? That's a...
This is a state permit that's based off of federal Clean Water Act.
Federal Clean Water Act? Okay. So, the state is enforcing a federal cleaner?
Yes.
To be in compliance with the federal Clean Water Act?
Yes.
I should be more clear. So, so, this is the feds down to the state, down to the locals, basically. And so, I understand there's three counties. We're working it together. What is the best outcome? What is the possible best outcome of this whole thing?
The best outcome would be if the region board said yes, say yes to everything we asked in our comment package. So, we did submit a redline version of the tentative order. This is the language tweaks that we want to see. We gave them justifications. We have legal briefs, legal backup for it. So, all we can do is hope and help them understand any and...
So, I assume if there is a ruling that's unfavorable to the three counties, then probably the next will be litigation. There's a possibility litigation.
There is a possibility.
Yeah, which is, yeah. Okay. Any comments from my members? Councilmember Lopez?
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Might I understand what you're saying is that there will be a $10.8 billion cost of compliance, which basically means that cost is going to then be passed on to the participating cities within the counties, right?
Yes.
So, they're basically going to strong-arm and find the hell out of every single city into compliance and say, do this, or face repercussions?
That is the worst-case scenario, sir.
And that's not the way government should work. I'm not, you're the messenger.
I understand.
You're the messenger.
Yeah, it's okay.
This is just completely the wrong way to go about doing this.
I agree.
Because Montclair doesn't have $250 million over the course of a 20-year period just to make sure that we are in compliance. And that definition of compliance can be forever changing. It'll be liquid in a sense. It's not going to be concrete. And if a new administration or new people come in in two years, four years, the terms can change again. I, I'm just taken aback by that. And I, once again, you have the state dictating the cities and not actually listening to the state constitution, which says, if there is a mandate for any service that is supposed to be placed on the localities, the state is to reimburse them, reimburse them for that expense. But yet, they always go around that, waive the rule, and that's the car, that's the sin that is being committed. But anyhow, I'm venting at this point.
It's fine. I, I, I understand, Councilmember. We do have, just for your information, we did file a unfunded, unfunded state mandate claim for our 2010 permit. So, the current permit right now, we have yet to have a hearing date on that.
So, what else?
No, go ahead.
So, going back to the, there's a staff, you mentioned there's an agenda item on the, on the staff report, staff report on the, on the agenda. And so, this is a permit, the district has permittee in the city. So, we participate in this, and this is part of the best scenario process?
Yes.
Okay. And when do you anticipate, when is the anticipation that a decision will be made by the regional board?
They have not indicated. We are meeting over the next six months before reporting back to the regional board.
So, this may be going on to the summer, the summer of next year, then?
It could be as early as the summer.
Could be as early as the summer.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. If staff can keep us informed on this, I think this is a, if this is imposed outside of this permit that we're being asked to consider later on the agenda, then it's going to have a lot of negative impacts. Obviously, this is disadvantaged communities, and it's going to impact a lot of the, especially the lower-income households. Obviously, we have a housing crisis, and this will worsen that by adding another $25,000 in coin of the she I'm looking at, $25,000 for the cost to build housing. And then, obviously, it's going to have an impact on building new roads and infrastructure, increasing those costs between 5% and 30%. And so, not good, especially we're trying to have quality of life here. So, but please keep us informed where this is going. Ed, you have anything you want to say, Ed?
Well, excuse me. We will certainly keep the city council informed. Keep in mind that this is very likely to move towards litigation, particularly at the end of the six-month review period that the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board has agreed to. And if it gets to that point, then obviously, any updates would have to be through a closed-session process rather than through open meetings. So, but we will certainly keep the council updated. We are gravely concerned with these numbers that Beacon Analysis came up with. Make certain that you, if you have the opportunity, review the cost impact analysis that was included as part of the agenda packet that was provided to you. I will say that in the case of Montclair, we are a little bit fortunate in that we've already implemented a number of inspection programs related to some of the businesses that would fall under the purview of the MS4 permit, and therefore, our costs are muted to some minor degree as a result of that, when you compare us to other cities. But nonetheless, the costs are excessively high. It would take approximately 6.25 years of city budget at the current general fund budget amount for us to pay the $250 million that is projected in the Beacon Analysis. That means that we would have to cut back significantly on services, operations, and all other related costs in order to meet this obligation if the MS4 permit, as the tentative order currently stands, goes forward. So, we will certainly keep the council and the public informed as we can.
And Ed, I assume you're making this presentation to all the cities in San Bernardino County?
We've opened it up. We've let our representatives know that if they would like a presentation to their city councils, then we are happy to do so.
How many city council presentations been made so far?
I believe this is the third.
Oh, third one. So, this is just a starting then.
Well...
Talked to my colleagues from other cities, like Wednesday, I'll be at SBCTA. A lot of them are not going to know about this, it sounds like.
We'll be there. Beacon will be presenting as...
Oh, you're already in the presentation Wednesday?
Yeah, on Wednesday, yes.
Okay. Perfect. That's good to know that, then. All right.
One quick thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, real quick, just to let everybody know. The Beacon Report is available online at sbcounty, the sbcountystormwater.org.
Perfect.
So, for public or for anybody to share.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate you both being here today.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for having us.
Okay. Let's have Councilmember Ru join us. Thank you. Okay, and now we have public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any item on the agenda, or if they wish to address any of the consent count items. This be the time to do it. You'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Since we are under Brown Act, we can't make a discussion on items not on the agenda. And city clerk, do you have any speakers?
Yes, our first public speaker will be Ruby Long via Zoom.
Good evening.
Hello, Ruby.
Good evening. How are you?
Just fine.
Well, I just have an announcement that I wanted to make, believe it or not. It's about that time of the year. Christmas is coming. It's around the corner. So, we are having our Christmas open house at Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office, the fourth district. Every year, we have it at the Tuna Hill City Hall, and it is one of our bigger events. So, we do ask that you please RSVP. So, if anyone is interested in joining us, please call our office or go on our website, and you can RSVP. It's going to be Wednesday, December 4th. So, it's early, early on in the year, December 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Edmund Garcia Senior.
Hello, sir. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Protem, city council, and rest of the staff. Again, my name's Edmund Garcia Senior. Live at 4529 Benito Street, and I've been a member of the Montclair community for the past 23 years. So, I'm not really good at public speaking, so I'm going to try to make this quick. I'm here to support for the two victims of this, that were sexually harassed by Councilman Ben Lopez. These past couple of years have been stressful for me and my family as we have tried to get past this incident that was caused by Councilman Lopez. These past few weeks have been particularly hard on us because of all the comments that have been made indicating that these victims of sexual harassment case involving Councilman Lopez were lying and using this case for political reasons. I'm here to tell you that this is not, that this is not the truth. Everyone that knows the details and circumstances of the case can attest to the fact that the victims are telling the truth. Now, it is shameful that the Councilman supporters blindly follow him without knowing the facts of this case, and they continue to victimize the two young men involved in the case. It is our family's hope that after tomorrow, we will no longer need to be concerned with the Councilman Lopez or his supporters. We will finally be able to put this ordeal past us, behind us, and maybe one day, Mr. Lopez will be honest enough in, about his actions and show some remorse. Again, thank you all for your time. That's it.
Our next public speaker is Nicole Resiani. She's from the Inland Valley Humane Society.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members. I'm from the Inland Valley Humane Society and SPCA, which is the local care, animal care and control provider for the city of Montclair. We service almost a million people, 11 agencies. And tonight, I just wanted to let the residents know about a few programs and services we offer, but I would be remiss if I did not ask the person that owns the 300 to 400-pound black and brown pig that we picked up today to come forward and claim your pig. In 2000, yeah, we have plenty of chihuahuas, too. In 2015, the cities that partner with us for animal care and control approved resolution of getting to zero, which means that we do not euthanize healthy, adoptable animals. And so, I'm proud to tell you that as I stand here in 2024, that is still happening. We are still committed to that, and we thank the city of Montclair and the residents for doing their part to help us continue in that endeavor. Part of that effort is access to resources, access to care. You can go on our website at ivhsspc.org. I did leave some new brochures that we had recently created with all the new happenings, as well as information about our medical center. But we have a lot of resources, including a pet pantry. We say, take what you need and leave what you can. It's not monitored. We don't ask you to give us your name and address. We just ask that you, if you are in need, that you come forth. As one in eight Americans are facing food scarcity, we know that sometimes if you're having to put food on the table, pet food has risen in cost, right, through COVID, and so that's a resource. There's also leashes and collars and, you know, little furry jackets for our little guys like the chihuahuas. In 2023, January 2023, we opened up our new Alex and Elizabeth Lewitt Medical Center, providing low-cost services. And I did want to just touch upon the fact that we now have five low-cost spay-and-neuter services, $80 to $100. That is not a gimmick. That is what we are providing. So, if you live in the city of Montclair, you can take part in that program. You can go online, or you can call us to schedule an appointment. Low-cost vaccines. We do a vaccination clinic at the Shelter Campus, the second Saturday of every month in the morning, but we also do vaccination by appointment through our website, and so you can go on and actually self-schedule for vaccine appointments. We also have wellness. We have dental program that we can do. So, there's a lot of low-cost and well services for pets to help people remain with their pets, because what do people do if they can't afford the services? They'll end up relinquishing pets. And so, we're trying to be a resource in that endeavor. For the month of November, we are offering free adoptions for adult dogs. If there is a puppy, that's $40. And then, something we're really excited about this year, we celebrated our 75th anniversary, and we actually just took possession this last week of our new mobile spay-and-neuter unit, which means that we will be able to deliver services directly to your community in your community. So, thank you very much for the opportunity tonight.
Well, thank you for coming down to give us a presentation, or a brief presentation on the Humane Society and some of the activities there. Thank you.
Ms. Grand, real quick question. Ma'am, I stepped out. I didn't get your name. Sorry. I have a question. You said there are discounted adoption rates for dogs. Then you said $40 for puppies?
$40 for puppies.
What about adult?
Adult is free.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have, believe it or not, a lot of protective custody cases that are lasting a long time in court right now. We have a dog that's been with us for over 400 days. So, anything we can do to help alleviate the stress and strain to keep those pets moving, yeah. And my name is Nicole Resiani.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming before us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our next public speaker is Xavier Mendez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. I'm Mayor Protem, city council member, city manager, and staff and residents watching and in the crowd. Just wanted to say good luck to Denise, Ben, Carolyn. We're all running for city council, and hopefully, everybody gets their vote out, and we'll see what happens. But good luck to everybody. Just want to say that, and that's it. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Carolyn Raft. She will be providing a public comment and commenting on item C2.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. City Manager Starr, and Diane. I want to announce tonight that I am very happy to be a part of our vector control. We were just awarded from the Special District Leadership Foundation Award. Our district for the vector control got another, got that award, and it's means every three years, they decide which district will get this award, and since 2018, we have won it ever since. So, I'm very proud of that. So, I do have a comment... So I do have a comment on B2. I hope that-
I'll give you another five minutes since you're on consent calendar. I'm sorry, B2?
Mm-hmm, B2.
I'll let you start.
Okay. I hope it includes the roundabout on Ramona and Howard. I know we're trying to gather the funds together for it, but I hope that it is something that we are including into that project. I didn't see where it mentioned the projects itself. On C2, I understand, this is a very huge project. And I understand that the project will be complete around 2027 or '28, it's about $6 million. They mentioned, and I noticed, they mentioned about the stop signs being lighted, which Montclair has already taken care of that, that process. I do hope that once the project is laid out, I hope or think there should be a meeting with a demonstration with all the affected residents, along with our council staff here in the chambers, or the city, the senior center, whichever one that you decide you would like to have it, to get their input, since this is really going to affect and impact them. And we, I would like to see what their opinions are, and I'm sure the council would too. It's, after all, it is their tax dollars as well. I understand that TKE Engineering, who's going to be doing the job, will meet with the impacted residents, but in my opinion, I feel it's better if everyone meets, so we are all on the same page and there's no misunderstanding. We all know that when our properties are impacted, we tend to get upset if we aren't completely in the loop of things, and we all want our kids and adults to be safe, that's for sure. So I would like to see, like I say, if we can, and if it's in the plans for all of us to get together to figure out, and so the residents are 100% sure of what's going to be happening. So, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to wish everyone good luck for tomorrow. Denise, and Xavier, and myself. So, thank you.
Our next public speaker is Marcos Trinidad.
On up. Got the Boy Scouts here today, looks like it?
Good evening.
They don't call them Boy Scouts, it's Scouts, huh, right?
It's Scouts.
It's called Scouts, see?
It's Scouts, it's Scouts. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name's Marcos Trinidad, and yes, as you can see, we are with Troop 634. And we're here today just to, to show our young scouts civic engagement and demonstrate what it, what it is to really be a member of a community. For me personally, on an individual level, I am a resident of Montclair. And we've been living here with my family for about three years now. And I do have to say that I really appreciate the, the recent investment in our parks, and I would love to encourage you to continue to invest in our, our open space here in Montclair, but really consider our tree canopy. There are a number of state and federal grants that are available for cities to partner with community groups to be able to plant trees. And with folks like us and scouts, we would love to participate in something like that. There was a report that recently came out that listed the city of San Bernardino as the dirtiest city in the, in the country. Not far behind, ranked number five was the city of Ontario. So these are our neighbors. And as we know, smoke, the breeze blows that, and, and I would really just encourage us to, to be proactive about our, our health and just being able to make sure that we're, we're actively doing something for, for climate resilience. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And if your troop would like to have a tour of city hall, police department, the fire department, something you're interested in the future, you can let me know. I gave you my business card, and then we can do that. So I don't know if you'd be around, how long you'd be around for, or give me, send me an email, or call my office, and we can set that up for you.
Well, thank you, sir.
Next public speaker is Bija Trinidad, or Bijja?
So this part of your Eagle Scout project?
Um, no, I am currently, I think, second class.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
It is for merit badge, citizenship in the community. What I wanted to talk about was following my, what my dad said, and I have a couple of personal experiences. Near this area, I, there is like a gym, and I played basketball there, and it was like fun, and this is going along the lines of investing in parks and those types of, well, mainly just parks in general, and about that, and also trees. I think I personally volunteered to plant trees with tree people and go along that. That's all I have to say.
Very good. And that's, it's great to see our youth get involved in the civic engagement.
Next is Paloma Trinidad.
Goodne, good evening, everyone. My name is Paloma Trinidad. I am 14 years old, and I'm with my scouting troop. I'm a resident of Montclair. I would like to thank those who are taking care of our parks right now, like my father and my brother have already talked about, like, it's like, as a family, we have enjoyed going, coming to these parks. And a very important part of my life since moving to Montclair has been joining Golden Girls Softball League.
Very good.
So I've spent many nights practicing and playing games at these fields. I would like to let you guys know that the work you do for our parks does not go unnoticed. I hope you will continue to make them better, plant more trees, and help create more spaces that the community can enjoy and appreciate. Thank you.
Very good. And just letting you know about parks, we're getting ready to open up a new park in Holt. That should be open this fall. And in this fall also, we will be reopening Sunset Park, which is by Kingsley Orchard Mills area.
Yeah, right down the street.
That's going to be a beautiful park there as well. And then hopefully, this time next year or close to it, will be under construction with Saratoga Park.
Yeah, it's great.
So that's another big one. But thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Tony.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Tony.
So my name's Tony Lopez, and it's been almost four years, and a lot of people have come to me and asked me why I haven't spoken up about the accusations against my son. And I can get up here and yell and scream and curse at everybody that's already judged, tried, and convicted him. And, but it's been an ordeal, and that's not me. His mother and I, and my son, what we do is, we just pray. God has given us the strength, he will continue to give us the strength, and not, teaches us not to hate, not to judge. I mean, I, I know everybody in this room, you know, in their young years, growing ups, you know, everybody's, has a past, you know? So I don't know anything about anybody, but I don't judge them. I, I've actually heard, well, people have come up to me, we all know pretty much everybody that I know, you know, at events, meetings, political people. We pretty much know everybody. And people have come up to me and shared some stuff about certain people. But I tell them, I wasn't there, I didn't see it, I didn't hear it. So, you know, and, and, you know, I just don't understand how people can be so quick to judge when they weren't there. They didn't see it with their own eyes, they didn't hear it with their own ears, they just heard it from somebody else, and they go on and believe it and run with it. That's the problem with this world, we have so much hate, and it just continues. And the reason is because of gossip and just rumors, and everybody believes it, when they don't even know if the accusations are true. And so, you know, I just wanted to come up here and say that. And, you know, we just keep continuing to pray for everybody that has already convicted him. And we just let God handle it, and I know he will. And, you know, just like, there's a scripture that says, let God be true in every man a liar. So he'll bring it to light, and we're trusting in God. And so that's all I want to say.
Thank you. I believe that was our last speaker? Thank you. Okay, we're on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to accuse myself on item C5 due to the NPDES component. I'll have to leave my, the, the room when that is voted off.
Osteen, okay. All right, well, I'll start with you, Bill, anyways. Anything else?
No, I was out of order, I just wanted to get it done before we get into this.
Well, I got the right side, Miles with the right, anything else on the right side? Any pull items, Ben?
Yeah, item B, like Boy 2.
B2, okay.
C, like Charlie 5.
C5, okay.
And D, like David 3.
Okay, D3. How about my left side? Going to add on to it?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question about item C1.
All right, C1. Anybody else on the right side, left side? The left, the right, that has nothing with politics, by the way.
No, but it, it looks like we-
You got pulled?
Are going to discuss D. Forgot which item this was. The, this is the resolution for the fingerprinting.
Which id, which, which one is it again?
D3.
I'm sorry?
One, oh, it's D1.
You want to pull D1?
Are we going to pull that to discuss?
Want to pull D1? Okay, we'll pull D1 as well. All right, we'll start with B2. So who wants to start with B2?
Mr. Mayor, I pulled the item.
Go ahead.
Just for purposes of a, of a comment, I know we did, or Monica presented to us a rather extensive and detailed presentation, what, a month ago, just recently? I wanted to commend you again, I appreciate the fact that for five years, we will be making these investments in, let me get the page, the cheat sheet here. It's actually in the staff report, hold on one second. 23 street and safety improvements, facility improvements, we'll have 13 projects. Park improvements will have nine, so nine parks will have improvements over the next five years with these funds. And then for sewers, we'll have 11 areas where sewers will be addressed, for a total of $193 million. Mrs. Raft, yes, I did look when you were speaking. Ramona and Howard is included in this with respect to the number of projects that'll be set within the five-year timeframe, which I also agree with you on, and I think all of us up here concur with respect to that, given the tragedy that happened there. But anyhow, no, I was just pleased, thank you for that. This is proof that the city is making progress, we're making investments that the voters asked us to do with Measure L. And there's, this is how thick the programs are and the details, so if things are getting done, I'll be happy to share this with anybody that wants to see it, or any of my colleagues can show you theirs as well. Thank you to staff, appreciate it.
And I'd just add on to that, as I stated at the workshop, the residents of this community approved Measure L at the time, four years ago, which was an increase in the sales taxes. And then from that, the city went ahead and floated bonds to do a number of capital improvement projects. So I want to compliment staff for the projects we already have done, and for the many more projects that we'll be accomplishing. And of course, that includes items C2, which are the safe routes to schools, improvement projects at Montevista Elementary, and Monterey Elementary, and Montclair High School. So those are my comments, and nobody else. If not, go to C1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question about the software for electronic citations. So I know it's a small question, but if it's digital, how does the, how does the driver, is it like a printout that we can hand to them, or does it get emailed? How do they get the information that they've received the citation?
If you, in, in the, in the agenda, good evening, everybody, by the way, in, in the, there is an actual, okay, so there's a couple different parts to that question. The citations will be signed on an electronic device, whether it be a cell phone, a tablet of some sort. A part, part of this agenda item is also the actual physical printer that will be in each vehicle, and it'll print out a copy of the citation that issued to the driver.
I didn't get to that part, thank you.
And then we also have printers that some of our parking enforcement, who are cadets, or who are, who are just conducting parking enforcement, they don't have to have a driver sign a citation, but they still have to issue the vehicle, they'll actually, they can actually wear the printer with them, it's a small thermal printer, and they can print out a citation, walk along the cars, issue the citation on the spot. So there is still a physical piece of paper that the driver will receive.
Thank you very much for that response.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on C1? No. How about item C5?
I'll wait till Mr. Rue steps out of the room. All right. So representatives are gone, so to the city manager, this item, or Ms. Eredia, this item is basically asking us to join with the other member cities. And in doing so, it basically gives us standing as a collective throughout this whole process. So in the event that we do, if litigation happens, we have standing, okay, because my inclination was to vote against this because of the imposition of all those forced fees, the way I see it. I've always been against the state telling us what to do, that's why we have an elected body here. But if it's just to give us standing, to proceed, give us a rightful place at the table, I'm, I will go along then. I appreciate her nodding along.
If, if I might just clarify, this, if there is litigation, it's going to be the permittees as a group filing an action. So the main purpose of this agreement is so that discussions between the permittees and their lawyers are all confidential. Because while we have an attorney-client privilege, you don't necessarily, there isn't one between you and another city's council. So if we enter into this, it keeps all the communications between the parties confidential and applies. So it's got nothing to do with the state, the mandate, it's just protecting the discussions and extending the attorney-client privilege.
The procedure, then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
I want to suggest that we just, since Bill's not in the room, we go, let's just, let's go ahead and prove this item right now, this C5. So can I get a motion for C5 approval?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the item as presented.
There's a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Moved by Lopez, second by Martinez. Go ahead and vote. Stop at 4-0 with Councilman Rue accusing, thank you, due to, due to conflict of interest issue. Okay, so we will continue on then, and so D1 is the next one.
Yes, we were provided with the revised version of the resolution, so I just wanted to be sure that when we vote on the item, we're voting on the item as revised.
I'm sorry?
Oh.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Martinez, we meant to mention that. So this is a slightly revised version from what's in the agenda. It's just to comply with DOJ requirements.
Okay, got it. Okay. Okay, that was, that was D1, and how about D3?
Uh, that'd be me again, Mr. Mayor. On page 140 of the staff report, in reading it, I'm assuming this basically is stating, obviously, we're gonna adopt a new policy that says whenever we make any type of purchases, we will basically give more environmental-friendly purchases priority as a result of receiving, um, program funds from CalRecycle or any of the other entities listed. Am I correct so far?
Effectively, yes, that establishes a policy. However, I do want to point out that, uh, most of these requirements are already in place, primarily through legislation that has implemented recycling programs that cities must participate in. So there isn't anything in here that is out of the ordinary and something that we would not already be following.
So, most of, well, we basically delegate that to BRTech, correct?
When it relates to our, uh, response to the state as far as our compliance with diversion of solid waste to landfills and our participation in, uh, recycling programs as well as the new food waste components, yes. And BRTech also does our reporting to the state in relation to that regard by collecting the relevant information?
My only concern was what if there was something that was perhaps of the same quality of an item needed to be bought, but it's cheaper, but it, it, it would not meet an environmental standard? What, this policy would then force us to pay for the more expensive item that would be deemed environmentally friendly as opposed to the one that's not?
No, actually, it does not, it provides the city flexibility. If it, uh, is an opportunity that provides us an alternative that is more amenable to our needs, including cost-related issues, then we may consider that.
And you said this was already in place for some time with us?
Well, a lot of the practices, yes. As far as a policy, we haven't adopted an official policy until the council's requested to consider this this evening, but, uh, we already do follow a number of these practices already, particularly as it relates to previous legislation that has mandated it.
Could you give me an example of something we recently bought that would fall under this?
Recycled paper, for example, we are required under recent legislation, SB 134, 138, yeah, no, uh, requires that the city acquire recycled, uh, uh, paper for copy machines and for other purposes. Uh, mulch is a product that the city makes available to the community at no cost through the recycling program. Um, and, uh, a number of other issues that are addressed in the policy comply with that legislation as well. Things like, uh, the requirement to purchase vehicles that are, uh, uh, zero polluting. Uh, there is legislation longstanding in which we participate with South Coast Air College Management District, where they give us, uh, money on an annual basis, and that money is used to buy vehicles for the city that must meet and comply with the requirements under, uh, state law. And so we do that, most of the vehicles that we buy for administrative purposes generally would comply with that requirement, uh, that they are zero polluting.
So they, they would be EVs predominantly?
Uh, well, in the past, it was hybrids, uh, but it is more dominated now by electric, by electric vehicles, yes.
And then in the cases of, like, say, toner cartridges, I guess those would have to be more green? Is that?
Uh, well, we, we certainly already participate in those sorts of programs, where any toner cartridges or inkjet cartridges that we use for our printers, we already participate in a recycling program.
I, I, I just know based upon stuff I've bought, that many times the more environmentally friendly products are not always the cheapest, they're rather expensive. So I, I, I understand the objective, I just disagree with the route that we get there. Because if indeed there is something cheaper that we can save with the people's money, I think we should go that route.
And that's true from the perspective that as these products came on the market and they were introductory products and they were still competing more heavily with the other products that have always dominated the market, yes, they were more expensive, but that is becoming lesser and lesser the case as these products dominate the market and these other products that we've typically relied on, uh, recede into the background as a less purchased product. So for example, when it comes to refrigeration units, uh, you can't even buy the old refrigerant for new, uh, air conditioning systems. To maintain those systems is probably cost prohibitive. Uh, and so you're almost in the place where, uh, if you are going to migrate to a new HVAC system, the new, uh, systems that use the less polluting refrigerant are simply more economical to, uh, purchase at this point in time.
I appreciate the responses, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so with that, uh, do I have a motion for the consent calendar? With the exception of Item C5 and amendment to Item D1?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the adoption of the consent calendar, uh, as just stated by the mayor.
Is there a second? By Martinez?
I'll second.
Let's vote. Great, uh, the consent calendar, amending Item D1 is approved and noting that Item C5 was approved separately under, under a different vote. Okay, so now we will go to, to council workshop, and we are declaring to establish a workshop with, uh, our federal legislative advocate on November 18 at 5:45. If no objections, so ordered. And I'll go to Communications and I'll hand it over to our Human Service Department.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have some upcoming events that I wanted to mention, and you'd want to have your calendars handy to put some of these dates down, I think. Our City of Moncler Senior Center will be hosting their Veterans Day Dance. It'll be next week on Wednesday, November 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the Community Center. Uh, music will be by a DJ who is also a veteran, um, and a retired public works employee, and Meals on Wheels volunteer Paul Malacara. Join us as we recognize our veterans, dance, and enjoy some light refreshments. Presentation of certificates will also be given to those veterans who RSVP by November 6th at the Senior Center. I also have flyers on the back table here if anybody is interested. I wanted to also let everyone know that donation bins for our Holiday Toy and Food Basket Program will be placed at locations around Moncler, including City Hall, the Senior Center, Recreation Center, Fire Station 1, and the Police Department. Donations will start to be collected on Tuesday, November 12th, and will be accepted until Friday, December 13th. We've, uh, already received a generous donation of toys for our younger children, so if you are interested in donating a toy, something for a pre-teen or a teen would be appreciated. Sports balls, craft kits, cosmetics, gift cards, or movie tickets are suggested options. If you have a large donation and need a pickup or would like to make a monetary donation, you can contact me after the meeting, or I also do have flyers on the table that provide a QR code for monetary donations and also a QR code for suggested gift list. So many thanks to those that will be donating to the program this year. I want to welcome everyone also to attend our Holly Jolly Holiday Event. It will be on Thursday, December 5th, from 6:00 until 8:30 at the Youth Center. The evening will include our tree lighting, entertainment, complimentary photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus. The event will also feature refreshments while supplies last and an area where children can write letters to Santa. Gift lights in memory or in honor of a loved one will also be available for purchase. We hope that you'll be able to join us for that great community event that is, uh, sponsored by our Community Activities Commission. Our police and fire departments will be holding food and toy drives at Costco to support our Holiday Toy and Food Basket Programs. Those drives will be held at Moncler Costco on Friday, December 6th, and Friday, the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we will have a suggested list of needed items available the day of the event to help make your shopping even easier. Our Community Activities Commission also invites you to submit their, uh, your entry into the Holiday Home Decoration Contest. I see people are already starting, the Halloween decorations are down, and they're already putting out some holiday decorations. So entry applications are available on the city website. They are due by Friday, December 6th, at 6:00 p.m. And the winners will be announced at one of our upcoming city council meetings. And finally, Santa, Mrs. Claus, and their sleigh will be dashing through the streets of Moncler on Saturday, December 7th, greeting residents and spreading holiday cheer. It will be from 12:00 noon until 7:00 p.m. Please note that while, while Santa does really want to visit every street, Moncler, uh, has a special route that changes every year, so they can see as many streets as possible. If there is inclement weather, the event will be, uh, either, that will likely need to be canceled. So pray for some sunny weather. And to follow Santa's route and to see locations for toys to be donated, please visit our city website, or you can call our City Hall number. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Marcia. Uh, city attorney? I don't think you have. Nothing, city manager?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna leave it to you and Councilmember Rue to talk about it, but, uh, just as a prelude to that, uh, pleased to announce to the council and the community that, uh, last Thursday, the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority awarded, uh, $798 million to complete the Gold Line from Pomona to Moncler. That is an astounding occurrence, very rarely, uh, is there that kind of money. Almost a billion dollars allocated to a particular project, particularly for two cities that actually benefit from that, Clermont and Moncler. So after 20 years of working on this, uh, we are proud to basically say that this has come to a conclusion and Light Rail will be completed to Moncler hopefully by 2030. Um, and if all things go well and the project is on time, as it, actually, under time, as it has been with the current extension from Glendore to Pomona, which is a year ahead of its anticipated date, hopefully we'll see the project completed to Moncler by 2029. And maybe if all things go well, it'll even meet the 28 by 28 projects, so that the Gold Line to Moncler and Clermont will be operational by, uh, the Olympics in Los Angeles in 2028.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I'll follow up on that. It was great to, uh, to be president in Los Angeles on Thursday, the day after the Dodgers won the World Series, by the way, so...
No correlation.
So there were county supervisors in attendance, wearing their Dodger outfit, the mayor was not there, and then she was at LAX to welcome the team back to LA. But it was great to, uh, be joined by my colleague, Councilmember Rue, and also Councilmember Martinez in this, uh, very important, exciting ceremony that occurred with the approval of the funds. Uh, in regards to SBCTA, uh, they are working on a second round draft agreements that was presented by LA Metro a couple weeks ago. And, uh, so they're going through the drafts right now, the second round. And the hope is that, uh, uh, the, the agreements will be at a, in front of a transit committee in December, which I chair, and in front of the SBCTA Board in January. And I understand sometime early next year, the bids will be in as well. And then the bids, the bids will be evaluated by a technical committee, which remember, the SBCTA staff is, is gonna participate. And then the goal there is to have that wrapped up by the end of spring, if I'm correct. And then from there, the contract will be awarded. SBCTA, uh, will, has $80 million, hopefully, our obligation, SBCTA remains the $80 million to build the component from the county line to Moncler. Um, the $798 million talked about is just for the LA County portion. So, uh, I appreciate, again, uh, my colleagues and city managers starve being there. Do want to recognize during the month of November, um, a couple events, but obviously, one is Veterans Day event. Monday will be Veterans Day, and I was just wondering, how many veterans do we have in the audience? Can you just raise your hand, all the veterans here we have? Well, thank you for your service to our great country. I'm also there in the month of, uh, uh, November, it is the American Indian and Alaska Native Heritage Month. So I just want to be able to, uh, recognize that, that, um, uh, group of folks as well. And then I also want to compliment staff, I wasn't here, I was, um, out of town, but, uh, there was a significant Halloween event that took place at Moncler Place. And then also there was a, uh, the Lights After School program that took place here at Civic Center. Again, these events, a lot of hard work from staff to put them together. And I do want to say that, uh, tomorrow's election day, and I don't think I have to tell anybody to vote, everybody understands the significance of it. Uh, in Moncler in 2020, there were 13,500 residents who turned out to vote, which is about 75% of the voter turnout for Moncler. And I do expect that that's gonna be similar, uh, for tomorrow's election. Um, you know, since, uh, I started participating in elections back in the 1980s, we've always had a very fair and, uh, non-controversial vote counting. It was a process that, uh, the political candidates, opposing political candidates respected. Um, you know, obviously, 2000, there was the, uh, the, uh, the Florida... Thank you very much, it took place. And then, of course, uh, I think the last presidential election, um, there was conspiracies about voter fraud, and I won't go any further than that, but I think it's important that tomorrow, as a nation, that we again respect our vote, election workers who are out there accounting. And I have full confidence that, not just here in California, in all 50 states, the, uh, the vote counter employees are doing their best to ensure that a fair and accurate count takes place in a, in a professional manner. Doesn't mean it will be some minor mistakes, but not in a very fraudulent or corruption, corrupted environment. So, I, I'll, I'll leave it here, our, our democracy is not only strong, but sets an example for the rest of the world, and we have a responsibility to ensure that our democracy through our election process remains strong and peaceful. So with that, I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Rue.
Yes, um, I will start with the event at the Moncler Plaza. The Halloween event was very well done, thank you to the CAC members who spent their time to help judge the costumes and of course, help out with the event. It was wonderful and it's good to see so many people turn out for it. On Saturday, November 2, uh, November 2nd, excuse me, I attended the Golden Girls Tent or Treat Event that they held over at their field. It was a very cold evening, but it was a nice event, they had different tents set up, and you could go from tent to tent, receive treats, things like that. The tents were creative, one was cocoa, another one was, uh, Dia de los Muertos. They had an Addams Family, they had, somebody did their tent to look like the Haunted Mansion at Disneyland, complete with some of the characters. I could go on and on, it was a great event. It's good to see young people being able to do something like that, our community, for our community. And that was what was special about it. The parents who spent their time, some of them were cooking for the young people, others were helping set up the tents, it was really good to see that, and that's what we're about in this community. Um, they mentioned the Gold Line, I'll start out with, on Wednesday, the 30th, I had a meeting in downtown LA, and as I will do when I have usually monthly meetings in LA, I do take the Gold Line, it's very easy. Uh, I'm not gonna be a hypocrite and drive my car when I can take the Gold Line, which I believe in. Um, on the next day, I took the Gold Line again. And by the way, they now have capped fares, where you can spend, after you spend so much, then that fare is, the rest of the time of that month is free, so that's another benefit they have. But it was a very, very good morning. I'm very pleased to see so many of those who had been involved with it for so long support it. I was actually also, uh, pleased to see that many who had been, I hate to say late to the train, but late to the train, who doubted it, who put up a lot of obstacles, who, uh, basically were against until they were for it, I'm glad that they came over to what I think is the correct side. I appreciate Supervisor Janice Hahn, who let us know she took the Silver Line there. She, uh, lives in the South Bay area, and she frequently takes mass transit to the Board of Supervisors and to the MTA meetings. She is pushing for more Light Rail in her area, and I talked to her staff later, and because of other things away from the council that I'm involved with, I said certainly I'd see what I can do to be supportive and rally some people to help. Uh, I do find it interesting that the room was pretty much full, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Mayor? Um, but what's interesting is there were people there who support mass transit. They tell you, "Take your bicycle, take your skateboard, do this, do that, do the other thing." Yet they drove their car. I understand, that happens. But you need to also be as understanding of the working-class people... But you need to also be as understanding of the working class people who have to take this and don't have the option of taking a car. And many of these want to take away the car. I'll give you an example, so you understand what I'm talking about. In the city of Los Angeles, they're preparing for the Olympics, and they've been very vocal in saying that it will be a car-less Olympics. No one will use their car. You must use mass transit. Oh, except, of course, if you're the political class or the affluent. Then the politicians, the elected officials, will be driving their car. And I'm sure the celebrities who attend will be driving their cars. It's a bit hypocritical, and if you promote mass transit and don't want cars, you need to be able to live that. I've always said the cars and the meeting, I'll get to this in a moment. The cars and mass transit in California go hand in hand. We do not have the high densities of New York City or Chicago. We certainly don't have the densities of London, Paris, Rome, Brussels, and some of the other world cities. We will get there, but it will be way down the line. So for the time being, cars and mass transit go together. We did have a hearing right in these chambers of the Assembly Select Committee on Transportation. It was a well-done hearing. It was the last for Assemblymember Chris Holden. He bookended his meeting. The first one he ever had on the Gold Line in transportation was in Pasadena. He reminded me that I was there at that one, and he ended it here in Montclair, bookending the Gold Line, starting out in Pasadena, ending in Montclair. And I really thank Assemblymember Holden for his multi, multi-decade support of the Gold Line and mass transit into the city of Montclair. It was most appreciated. I don't want to go on. I have other things here, but we've been reminded tomorrow's election day, and that's important. You may have your favorite candidate. Vote for whomever you please. Vote on any of the propositions the way you feel, but vote. I do want to say that I'm very, very, very disheartened at some of the campaigning that's gone on in this city by candidates. There's been at least two mailers sent out that I find vile. Doesn't matter what I think. I find them vile. They were supposedly in support of two candidates. Those candidates have said they don't agree with it, or that they didn't authorize it. That's fine. But I would hope when the election is over, that some action is taken with the FPPC, or at least a cease and desist should have been put in place. I know if I had been the candidate this group was supposedly supporting and sent something like that against another candidate, I would have started to do whatever I needed to do legally, including FPPC and a cease and desist. That takes time. It would never happen before the campaign is over. But I'm hoping when the campaign is over, someone does that, because I think it's important to find out who's behind this, the people involved with it, and who's funding it. I do not like those nasty campaigns. Sadly, the Pandora's Box has been opened, and I think it will be pretty much something that we see regularly here in Montclair. Other than that, please, on Veterans Day, remember to honor all those who have served. Veterans Day commemorates the end of the First World War, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, when the guns went silent across Europe. It's a moment that Americans who lived through that era never forgot, and they handed it down to their children and their grandchildren. So please honor our veterans. I will be out of town that day on a work conference, but at that conference, they're setting aside about 20 minutes to honor the veterans. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also piggyback on the comments with respect to November 11th, which is just seven, a week from today, as a matter of fact, seven days away. It being Veterans Day, and as my colleague just said, on the 11th day, the 11th month of the 11th hour, that's when peace was basically agreed to. And I believe it was initially called Armistice Day, was it not? And then it was changed to Veterans Day, because Armistice Day, I believe, it was only to commemorate those that had served during World War II. It's changed, I'm sorry, World War I, sorry, thank you. And changed to honor all veterans of every branch, every conflict, every battle here in the United States. To the three veterans in the room, thank you for your service. We owe you an eternal debt of gratitude. I have my grandfather's plaque is on the wall outside. He served in Korea. He was in the Navy. Every generation of my family has had the distinct honor and privilege to serve in the military in one capacity or another, both men and women of our family. And both sides of my family are heavily involved in the military way of life, as it is. Let's see here. I want to publicly thank Public Works employee Chris Gonzalez about, goodness, maybe Wednesday, Thursday of last weekend, I had emailed the city manager to inform him of some very, actually, it was the night of Halloween. That was Thursday, correct? So night of Halloween, next morning, actually, 10:30 at night, some residents started complaining. We had a very bad case of some graffiti in our alleyway. And I had notified the city manager, and within two days, Chris Gonzalez, our Public Works employee, came by and power washed it, removed the graffiti off of one homeowner's brick wall. Another one, you can still see it lightly, and he did say there may have to be a coat of paint that staff may have to come and apply. But overall, the graffiti in the eyesore is gone. So kudos to the quick response. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Monica, to the quick response from staff. And I know that the two property owners are appreciative of it, and those of us that had to see the eyesore are very grateful for that. So thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions, because I had a couple residents, of course, in talking to voters with the election and all. They're concerned about Central Avenue, north of the 10, as you're going south, approaching the 10 and going under, the road not being as smooth as Montevista. So is SBCTA still taking the lead or authority on that stretch of street? Or are we now taking over that?
The road is not smooth underneath the freeway?
It's bumpy. No, as you're going south on Central, approaching the freeway, passing under the freeway, they're comparing it to Montevista. They're saying that there's, it's uneven, it's bumpy. They say there's potholes. I drove it today. I didn't see any potholes, but I wanted to at least bring that up for them.
Monica, if you can correct me, I think Montevista is supposed to get another base pavement? And is there, do you know one for Central? Go ahead, Monica, if you can answer the question.
... and their contractor to determine the limits of the repaving, including Central. So I haven't seen any bumps either, but yeah, there's still more work to be done, as well as Benson. So all three areas still need work done, in terms of pavement and landscaping and signs and other things.
Right. And then the effort to see if SBCTA will cover the repaving of Montevi, I'm sorry, Pallaverti to San Bernardino on Montevista, or what status on that?
Yeah, we're, again, we're still in discussions with that as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Please continue those discussions. I know residents would appreciate it. Thank you. And of course.
Did you say Pallaverti to San Bernardino on Montevista?
San Bernardino.
No, they will not extend the paving that far. They have already defined the limits to which they will do. And the only other additional improvement I believe that they're going to do is maybe some additional on Pallaverti, but taking it all the way to San Bernardino and Montevista, no, that will be the bulk of the city's responsibility when we do that project.
Okay, making note. And of course, tomorrow is election day. I would advise everyone to please, please, please get out and vote if you're of the voting age. I've already personally dropped off over 20 residents' ballots, not to a ballot box or the post office, but to the San Bernardino County Register of Voters. Those that wanted them dropped off immediately. I offered to do it and took them in, because it's that important to do so. You know, I've always said that too many people have lost their lives and have made, paid the ultimate sacrifice for us just to be complacent and stay home. There's no excuse. You're mailed a ballot. You have multiple days to vote. You can walk it in. You can postmark it tomorrow, drop it off here at City Hall. And I believe we still have a drop box at the police station. But please go vote. You can go to the polls. I'm not going to pontificate on who you should vote for. Just please do go vote. That said, you know, I have been rather quiet and hadn't said a whole lot in the past three and a half years. But the depiction of me is inaccurate, by all means inaccurate. And I'm not taking, it's not lost on me that the term rat would be used. And I take great offense to that, because that connotation is actually tantamount to a slur and a trope used against Jewish people since the 1940s. And I wonder if it's perhaps that I pushed hard from this seat to adopt an anti-hate resolution that the Jewish Federation asked us to do, and that I voted against a matter before us that would have asked us to divest from Israel and taken a pro-Gaza stance. So I think it's very antisemitic, those pieces of mail. And they should be called out for what they are, and that's hate speech. And how dare the folks that want to accuse me of being hateful, when I, my record proves I am not, would do the very hateful thing themselves. I did look, Bill, at the committee. There's only one donor to it. $25,000. Happens to be a city employee who's involved in one of the lawsuits. There is no Friends and Businesses of Montclair, as the name purports. It's just one individual. But that said, I will remain vigilant, and I will stand by my votes and my record. And I will ask folks to please consider that themselves when going to vote. Look at my record. Look at my statements, and look what I've done. I will wish Denise Johnson, my colleague, well. Xavier, I will wish you well, and I will be the better man, as I've always been towards you. Carolyn, I wish you well as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of quick items. I just want to let the community know that if they were not able to attend the health fair that was held here at City Hall, there is another one coming up. It's at Life Point Clinic and Urgent Care on Central Avenue, right off of Moreno. It's a, it's been, the clinic has been there for a long time, but it's under a new, a new physician has taken over it. So that event is on November 9th at 9:30. It's Life Point Clinic and Urgent Care. There will be a ribbon cutting at 9:30, and then the health fair event starts at 10 o'clock. And then I have to say, on another topic, I was very encouraged over the weekend as I've been coming and going. I see lots of people pulling up here at City Hall, putting their ballots in, and lots of people are voting, and I'm glad to see that that is happening. I will be voting in person tomorrow, as there are so many people who came before me who were not allowed to do, to go into the ballot box. I stand on their shoulders, so I'll be in the ballot box tomorrow morning. And I hope everyone in the city of Montclair understands that every single vote counts. Some people, I've heard some people say, eh, it's just one vote. I'm just one vote. What does that mean? Every single vote counts. So please do vote. You can still do your absentee ballot tomorrow. You can vote in person. You can take your absentee ballot to the poll if you want to hand it to them that way. There's still lots of opportunities. Don't, don't give up your right to have a voice. Please do vote tomorrow. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes, so Mayor Dutre touched on this, but at the Montclair After School Program, Lights on After School event on October 24th, they celebrated their 25-year silver anniversary. And I wanted to highlight the fact that at that celebration, there was a learning leader, Martha Navarez, who was given an award for 25 years of service, which I thought was pretty cool, that she was there for all of the, all of MAP. And there were also many performances by MAP students in the district and a display of many different art portfolios. And we have some very talented students in our district, so that was very cool to see. As for the Halloween Spooktacular, it was not only well-attended, but there were about 12,500 people that attended, so just incredible amount of people. Yeah, incredible. And the event was put on and just very, very well. Councilmember Bill Rue was involved. I saw him running around with the Community Activities Commission, who was doing a great job with the costume contest and really just putting on the event. And city staff was present and hosting the game booths and handing out candy. And it was a really fun time, so thank you, everyone. That's all.
All right, perfect then. Then we're going to end this meeting. Thank you for coming, and enjoy election day tomorrow. Bye-bye.